Turn them off as we get ready for the council meeting. I know, right? Forgot to do that, man. Are we ready, Don? Okay, at this time, the mayor will call to order the regular city council meeting for 6:00 PM Tuesday, September the 6th of 2022, City Council Chambers, 201 East Nash Street, Terrell, Texas. We have with us in the chambers District 2 Grady Simpson, District 3 Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, and Mayor Pro Tim, District 4 Stephanie Holmes-Thomas will be here, she's running a little bit late. She's deputy mayor pro tim, and then, of course, we have District 5 who's vacant. We do have a quorum present, so we'll continue with our meeting. Grady? No. We have with us tonight for invocation Father Ian Hyde from Good Shepherd Episcopal Church. If you would, please come forward and lead us in our prayer. You are new to Terrell and new to Good Shepherd, so welcome. Is there anything you'd like to say before we do our prayer? Where are you from?
I'm originally from Tyler, but I just moved here from Milwaukee.
Oh, okay, wonderful.
Yeah, only been here about three months.
Oh, wonderful. Well, if everyone would rise, remain standing for the pledges.
So I've got two prayers here. The first one is for local government and the second one is for the city. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the cities of the earth. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders, enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order. That men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find one another and in you the fulfillment of their humanity through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
All right. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Again, Father Ian Hyde, thank you very much, we appreciate you so. Welcome to the city of Terrell, welcome to our community. Our next item on the agenda is Mayor and Council Community Recognition and Events. Council, I was at an event yesterday and today, it was called the Texas Brotherhood Ride. It's cyclists who go from town to town in honor of first responders who have fallen. I want to take a moment and recognize Derek Hill for his participation in the event and the Terrell Fire Department. They opened up arms and welcomed these guys in from all over the state, and it was good to visit with them. Their motto is never forget, we never want to forget our fallen. They represent those who have fallen the previous year, and they're firemen, policemen, EMS, so it was good to have them in the community. Also want to thank First Baptist Church, Ryan Erwin, who helped in finding a place for them to spend the night and to feed them dinner last night and breakfast this morning. You know, First Baptist Church is always there when the city or the community needs them, so if you see someone from their church, please tell them thank you. Chief, is there anybody that would like to speak on this, or we good? Did anybody want to say anything about the ride? Okay. Does anybody else have any recognitions or events? Yes?
I want to recognize an individual who's not here, he's a very good friend of mine. They call her Chef Adely, and she made some little pastries here for the council. The mayor had one, I think he wants to order a whole other batch.
My birthday's next week. No, no, it's not, it's not, but those are sinful. Father, you know, those are so good. Being a diabetic, I should not have indulged, but, and I was just gonna try a piece of it, right, Grady? And I ate the whole thing.
Accidentally, accidentally.
I accidentally ate the whole thing.
But Chef Adely, I just want to take a moment to give her a recognition. She has a business called Delicious Legacies, and she also has a book out, so if you want to go on Amazon and get Delicious Legacies, she has a nice cookbook out, I think everybody would enjoy. Just want to take the time to give her this recognition, she's not able to be here, but just want to give her recognition anyway.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor?
Yes.
I would also recognize, have two different recognitions, one for Terrell ISD, who is who has many efforts at this time to really make sure that they're reaching as many community members as they can to make sure that they are informed and become involved to the extent possible to support the students of Terrell ISD, whether it's their students or as a community member to those students. I know they've launched a series of efforts and programs to reach community members. The second recognition I'd like to make, because we do have additional two members here with us today, is the Social Science Club that's located in Terrell, is kicking off their yearly meetings this year, and we do have Ms. Hillary Heisel and Jenny Heisel, who are also members here with us today. And the organization plans all year long for a tour of homes, which, forgetting the date, but in December, we'll have a tour of homes, and that is the main fundraiser that goes back to different organizations from the Terrell ISD Foundation to the Share Center and many more. So once we have, I'll come back with more informed information about the tour homes, but all great opportunities to make sure that our community's informed and has an opportunity to participate in different areas that are available to them.
Thank you, councilwoman. So as we begin our meeting, I'm gonna ask that we take things a little bit out of order. If there's no objection as we move forward with our meeting, we need for our councilwoman Stephanie Holmes-Thomas from District 4 to be involved in some of the discussions. So if you see us jumping around, it's because we're giving her time to get here. So our next item on the agenda is adoption of, oh, here are remarks from visitors. Do we have any, Don? Our next item on the agenda is adoption of, oh, okay, oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward. So this item, we allow for public comment, it's to hear remarks from the public, but not to engage in back and forth with our citizens. So if you would just state your name and your address, and then you can go ahead.
Okay. I'm Edna Wilson, and I live on 902 South Hattie Street here in Terrell. Can I start now? Okay. My concern is about my street, the pavement, it was great. In fact, we love how the way our street looked after y'all paved it, it used to be blacktop and all that. However, one of the builders that came to our street, I guess he bought the property, anyway, he ended up digging some holes into our beautiful concrete street on each side, and he hasn't built a house yet or anything there. Now, I can understand it if he was, you know, building a house and had to run a pipeline or whatever, but I guess the place hasn't been sold because it still has the sign up, and, but he filled it in initially with some gravel-like stuff, and with the rain and all that, naturally, it's gone. So now we've got two chug holes. I took the liberty of taking some pictures of it, and if you need these pictures, you gotta look at them to show you exactly what I mean by it. It's close to, it's on the end near Hood Street. It's not right at Hood, it's a little before you get to Hood, and since you guys paved, the city paved our streets so beautifully, it has attracted a lot of traffic, so therefore people turn down that street, and they're gonna turn again when they get off to Newton, and there's stop signs at each end, they'll be driving real fast, and they're hitting the chug holes and making them larger or whatever. But anyway, I just liked, I don't know who to see other than just come to you all and ask that something be done about contacting him and seeing what are we supposed to do? Really, I live on that street, and our street is normally a real calm, quiet street, and I just, I know I appreciate the pavement. I mean, after we paved it, it just became the most popular street, it seemed like, on that side. But anyway, this demonstration will show you all the little breaks and things in it since in that one section, but it's getting, it's getting deeper and deeper, and the more it rains, the more it washes out. So I really just don't want to see our street be all patched up and messed up, because it took some time and effort to get it as far as it is, to that, to the point where it was really a nice-looking street, okay? So do you want to see these, or what do I do with them?
If you would, please just give them to Dor. Dor, would you get those for us, and then we'll take a look at it? We'll get that in the right hands. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Was there anything else?
Okay, thank you. Give me the time.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, you bet. So our next item on the agenda is the adoption of the minutes, discuss and consider minutes from the regular city council meeting on August 30th of 2022. Is there a motion on item 6.1?
Motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes from August 30th of 2022 as presented.
We have a motion from Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, Mayor Pro Tim, District 3. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Have a second from Grady Simpson, District 2. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries with unanimous consent of those present. Our next item on the agenda, where do we need to go to next? We're gonna go.
The carrying's next, Mayor.
I know, no, we're gonna, I want Stephanie here for that one. Let's get everything, we'll get everything done that we can. Okay. All right, so if there's no objection, council, I'd like to move to our boards and commissions, starting with 9.1. Do I hear any objections? Hearing none, we'll move to item 9.1, discuss and consider appointment of board members to tax increment reinvestment zone number two. This is Don Stahl.
Mayor and council, this item is gonna be the same for 9.1, 9.2, and 9.3. Tax increment reinvestment zone number two, three, and four were created by ordinance number 2819, 2918, 2919, and 2920. These ordinances also established a board of directors consisting of five members serving two-year terms. Three of the members will be appointed by city council, and three of the members will be appointed by Kaufman County. So to be consistent with TERS number one, the staff recommendation is to appoint the same three members to TERS number three, four, and five board of directors, and these members are Juan Salazar, Andrea Reese, and Charles Whitaker, and this board falls under the oversight of Mayor Ronnie Velazquez.
Okay, councilwoman, so what I'm gonna ask us to do, because there's zone, tax increment reinvestment zone number two and three and four, let's take them individually. Let's go to number two. Do you have any comments or remarks?
No, I think the recommendation to have the same members for the first two, specifically for this item first, number two, is a good recommendation to follow, so I would be in support of appointing individuals that remain.
Okay, so for 9.1, would you like to make a motion?
I move to appoint Andrea Reese, Charles Whitaker, and Juan Salazar to serve as board members for the tax increment reinvestment zone number two.
We have a motion from Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, Mayor Pro Tim, District 3. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Have a second from Grady Simpson, District 2. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with unanimous consent of those present. Our next item on the agenda is 9.2, discuss and consider appointment of board members to tax increment reinvestment zone number three. Don, you've already given us the.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Councilwoman?
I move to appoint Andrea Reese, Charles Whitaker, Juan Salazar as board members to the tax increment reinvestment zone number three TERS.
We have a motion from Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, Mayor Pro Tim, District 3. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Have a second from Grady Simpson, District 2. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Did I hear Stephanie on? So do I include her as in the vote?
Yes, I'm here. I tried to second the motion on the first TERS, but I think councilwoman.
Grady beat you to it.
Simpson beat me to it.
Okay. I want you to drive safely. Are you driving? Yes?
Oh, I am, I'm good.
Okay, all right.
I can hear you and I can see you.
Okay.
I'm listening.
All right. You drive careful.
I'm listening.
Okay.
Thank you.
So do I include her in the vote?
Yes, she can be included in the vote.
All right, so then, do I need to vote?
You can still vote.
Okay, all right.
That's your option.
I just want to make sure, all right. Our next item on the agenda is 9.3, discuss and consider appointment of board members to tax increment reinvestment zone number four. Don, this is the same presentation, councilwoman?
I move to appoint Andrea Reese, Charles Whitaker, Juan Salazar as board members to tax increment reinvestment zone number three.
Okay, so we have a motion. Yeah, number four.
Number four, I believe.
I will amend my motion to remove zone number three and replace with zone number four.
We have a motion from Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, Mayor Pro Tim, District 3. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Have a second from Grady Simpson, District 2. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries with unanimous consent of those present. Mr. Sims?
Mayor and council, I just want to say that we owe the county a great thank you. Commissioner Hunt and Commissioner Barber are our members from the county on tax increment zone number one. I was down there this morning with the team, and they did give unanimous approval to the creation from the county side. We've already done our step, but from the county side, they did today unanimously approve TERS two, TERS three, and TERS four, so that was great news to get the county's full support, and we owe them the thank you as well.
Okay. So we'll move on to discussion items. Item 10.1, discuss memorandum of understanding between the city of Terrell and McLendom-Chisholm. This is gonna be handled by John Godwin.
Mayor and council, thank you for your time. This will be fairly quick, I think. We've been talking about a memorandum of agreement by which we would serve water to McLendom-Chisholm and surrounding areas for about two years now. Had a number of delays, they've gone through, they're on their third manager now, their mayor's always been very, very supportive, but things have kind of come together. Two weeks ago tonight, McLendom-Chisholm approved this MOU, and just kind of briefly hit some highlights of that, and in the recitals, this begins on page 315, by the way, if that matters. On page 315, the recitals to this MOU, and it kind of three basic things. The first one is that McLendom-Chisholm realizes they need to have water, you know, they're a city, they're a growing city, they're approaching 5,000, at which point they can become a home rule city if they choose to do so, and they're discussing that already, and yet they don't provide their own water, they don't provide their own sewer. And so, as you can, you know, back with our, some of our TERS stuff, that's important, especially now that cities generally only have voluntary annexation for the most part now, and so by controlling water, you can help control development, by controlling development, you control the quality of that development. And so, one of the big recitals, one of the main things for McLendom-Chisholm is they want, they want to be able to sell water. And then the thing for us is, we want to be able to provide water from here to there, basically. We would sell weller to McLendom-Chisholm on a wholesale basis, and they would be the retailer, but our real interest is not just to help out McLendom-Chisholm, we're trying to be good neighbors and all of that, but our real interest, frankly, is that between here and there, we want to be able to sell water. Ultimately, the goal is to be able to sell water all the way to the county line, and as you know, the county line is also the school district line, so the idea is for us to be able to have significant input and hopefully future annexations of the like with the TERSs that are going on now, and so that we can control the quality of that development, both as it's designed and as it's built, and that it's maintained into the future, because that'll have a positive impact on Terrell ISD. The actual deal points are fairly simple. We will kind of be the lead dog on this project. We'll manage the project, we'll manage the construction, or call someone else to manage the construction, easement acquisitions, rights-of-way acquisition, so forth and so on. We've spent a good bit of time and effort on preparing studies for the water supply in that area, and again, we're not really doing this because we want to be able to get that, just to help them out, we're wanting to get the development, and so part of this is we'll, we will enter into hopefully additional development agreements with other partners, both owners of property, there's some large, large tracts out there that are owned by folks, and most of those will be developed at some point in the future, because that's the way Kaufman County's going right now, as you know. And McLendom-Chisholm is able to trade, basically, they're trading water for land, and so a lot of this area that we're interested in is in their ETJ, their extraterritorial jurisdiction, and so if we want to move our ETJ all the way to the county line, they're okay with that in exchange for water, and so that's the, that's the, that's the basic deal, is land for water. There's three kind of exceptions along there, if you're familiar with any of these properties, you may or may not be, the say property or see property, I hear it pronounced both ways, and I don't know which one is right, it crosses the county line, so we would actually claim all of that, even a little bit up into Rockwall County, because we don't want to split the property up, that makes it more difficult for developers. The Moore Farms property, which is kind of in no man's land out to the west of this area we're talking about, or to the east, rather, and then the other property that really kind of got this thing going is the Mann property. The Mann property is southwest of McLendom-Chisholm, to kind of orientate there. It's also on the county line, and part of that would normally be in our area, but we're thinking that should stay the same, and that should all go north with McLendom-Chisholm. There's a couple of other developments that are in process right now. One is owned by Telus, and there's a representative from Telus here this evening. There's also a Huffines project, those are all both residential projects, those are probably the first two, if this continues to move along, that'll be served by water that will sell to McLendom-Chisholm, and they will sell to individual homeowners, in this case. Once, once this is approved this evening, presumably, then our next step will be to work with other partners out there. There are a couple of water supply corporations that are affected besides McLendom-Chisholm and us. There's also North Texas Municipal Water District will have to approve this, so there's a lot of steps still to go. Part of the steps, though, when we come back to you again, is that because this is an MOU, that's an, basically, it's an intention, this is what we all understand, this is what we intend to do, so the next step will be to do it, and so at some point, we'll bring back to you a binding in our local agreement between McLendom-Chisholm and the city of Terrell. Any questions?
The next step will have more details into it, really.
Right.
Counsel, we were approached by the Mann, Mann property, right?
Right, that's how it started, right there.
Couple of years ago, maybe two or three years ago.
About three years.
Would this be possible? So with the work of Mike and everybody involved, we were able to get to where we are today, to where us and McLendom-Chisholm can have a memorandum of understanding about who's gonna be doing what and where, and move forward with it. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Godwin? Are we good? Did, I saw that, and you know what, one of the things, you know, that stood out to me is, we didn't go seeking these developers, they came to the city of Terrell, which, you know, hopefully gives North Texas Municipal Water District a little bit of cover, right, with the other members.
I think that helps, in fact, I've had three other developers and three other property owners that have come to us looking for water as well.
Yeah, right. And if we can, if we can help out another municipality, man, I think that's what cities should do, right? If we can help McLendom-Chisholm grow, and we're better for it, and they're better for it, and that's the way partnerships start and work out, and that's a good thing for all of us.
And long term, we hope to help the TISD out as well. That's very important, obviously.
All right. Mike, you got anything? All right, thank you, thank you.
We'll bring this back next, next week.
All right. Next item on the agenda. So let's move on to item 11.1, discussion and consideration of all matters incident and related to approving and authorizing. Uh, discussion and consideration of all matters incident and related to approving and authorizing publication of notice of intention, uh, to issue series, uh, twenty twenty-two A certificates of obligation, including the adoption of a resolution pertaining thereto. This is, uh, City Manager Mike Sims.
So, Mayor and Council, resolution, uh, two zero three one is just another step in a long planned series of, uh, water, uh, capital improvements for us. Uh, whenever we do this, we, uh, cooperate with our, uh, partners down at the Texas Water Development Board. Uh, the first of the two that we're going to talk about tonight is covered by twenty thirty-one. That's going to be called Certificate of Obligation Series two zero two-two A. And it's three million, two hundred ninety thousand dollars and that's utility fund borrowing. It's already in our utility fund rates to be able to afford this, uh, by the Texas Water Development Board Clean Water State Revolving Fund. Uh, they're going to be used to construct the Market Center Lift Station and some additional wastewater mains, uh, in the city. So Market Center Lift Station is the one down, uh, close to the corner of Sage Hill Parkway and American Way. And that needs, uh, uh, to be, uh, rebuilt, uh, be a little bit bigger, uh, handle, uh, some of the growth down there. And, uh, then as you know, there's a variety of places where, uh, having additional wastewater repairs in the core part of the city, uh, comes along as necessary from time to time. And this will give us a pot of funds necessary to do that. Tonight's vote is not to actually do the borrowing, uh, but the, tonight's note is to give the official public, uh, notice, uh, and let that, uh, begin. So you've got a period of time, about forty-five days, for us to be out advertising, saying, hey, we're intending to do this, we're planning on doing it. If you get over to page three hundred and twenty-two, uh, there's a, uh, exhibit A and it goes through a little bit of the detail of this. And it'll be, uh, what's getting, what gets posted, uh, by the city secretary. And you can say, uh, C, that it's a promise that we will convene at seven o'clock, um, uh, although I think that's a editorial problem there. But it'll make it six o'clock on November the eighth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, so that is, uh, resolution two zero three one, just following the prescribed, uh, process to do this planned borrowing.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments or questions on, uh, the certificates of obligations, the twenty twenty-two A series? Hearing none, and this just begins the process?
Yes, sir.
And so, it'll come back to.
Yeah.
It'll come back to us? We'll have a public hearing? Does anybody have any objections to having the public hearing? Okay. Uh, we need a, uh, this is a consideration item?
It is.
So we would need to, uh, approve?
Resolution two zero three one.
Two zero three one. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mayor, may I make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty thirty-one?
We have a motion from Grady Simpson, District Two. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, Mayor Pro Tem District Three. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries with unanimous consent of those present. Next item on the agenda is eleven point two. Uh, discussion and consideration of all matters incident and related to approving and authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue taxable series twenty twenty-two B certificates of obligation, including the adoption of a resolution pertaining thereto. Mr. Sims?
So, Mayor and Council, this is a similar item. This time around, we're talking about, uh, resolution two zero three, three two. Uh, this can be, uh, CO series two zero two-two B. And it's regarding four million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, uh, again, utility fund borrowing, already built indoor water rates, uh, subsidized by the Texas Water Development Board for Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. Uh, these funds are going to be used to design and construct the relocated poetry elevated storage tank. So I, I got to be clear when I say that, this is the City of Terrell, uh, um, elevated storage tank, the water tower that's over there close to the high school. That needs to be in a slightly different location, so it's not going to move particularly far. Uh, but that, uh, was built, uh, close to the time that I was born and it's, uh, due to, uh, be torn down and replaced, uh, which is also what they do with aging city managers. And so, we, um, uh, we'll be happy to have it there. I will say, a, a note of, uh, great love for a engineer by the name of Frank Razor, who designed that early in his career. He actually lives very close to that, if you know Frank. Uh, he gets to sit out and, uh, look at his water tower that he designed, oh, those many years ago. So it's done a great job, it's been doing its job for these many years. Uh, but we need to update it and get it to be freshened up and need a brand new one. So, uh, that's what this does for us. And again, uh, we've been planning this for several years now, so this fits nicely within our current, uh, water rate structure. I should also say the same, uh, clerical note, uh, we'll be changing that, uh, seven PM to six PM when we publish this.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Um, for those of you who weren't and raised near Terrell, you've probably got some stories you could share about water towers in the City of Terrell. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Mr. Sims?
No questions. Uh, the only comment is that, uh, for those listening, the difference between, um, item eleven point two and eleven point two is that, uh, this series of funding, uh, borrowing will only be used for poetry elevated storage tank, um, design and construction.
Yes. Yes.
Right. Uh, is there a motion on eleven point two?
Motion to approve res- resolution number two zero three two as presented.
We have a motion from, uh, Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, Mayor Pro Tem District Three. Is there a second? I have a second from, uh, Grady Simpson, District Two. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries with unanimous consent of those present. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, Councilwoman, are you, uh, are you close? Stephanie, can you hear me?
Yeah, I got the audio button, yes, I'm on Griffith Avenue.
Okay, cool.
Uh, I'm probably about the...
You know what? Uh, we're going to reassess for fifteen minutes, for just about five minutes to give her time to get here.
Yeah, no, the problem is they're all, everything's cool. It's all back over.
I know.
How long has it took me and Grady yet? They are.
This poor thing, I've had it for over a year.
Yeah, no, I love it. And I can't, well, all of my notes were on last week's agenda, right? I didn't know, I don't know how to import. All right, here we go. All right, so we're going to reconvene into our regular city council meeting. We're going to get back on schedule. And initially what we had wanted to do is do some consultation with our attorney. So we're going to adjourn just for a few minutes and then we'll get back. We're going to adjourn into executive session in accordance with section 551 of the Texas Government Code to discuss the following: section 551.1, I meant, section 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding District 5. And then also section 551.072 deliberations regarding real property. Section 551.087 deliberations regarding economic development negotiations. We will be back shortly, please.
We're going to reconvene into regular session and consider action, if any on items, discuss in executive session. At this time, the council's going to pass on resolution number 2035 until next Tuesday. Our next item on the agenda is 8.2, discuss and consider ordinance number 2925, an ordinance of the city of Terrell, Texas establishing the tax rate on the taxable property within the city of Terrell, Texas for fiscal year 2022.
8.1, Mayor.
Oh, I didn't, oh, right, sorry. So, we're at 8.1. Conduct a public hearing regarding establishing the tax rate on all taxable property within the city of Terrell, Texas for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. Mr. Sims.
So, Mayor and Council, you can see ordinance 2925 here. This has to do with how we're setting our tax rate. It is a very straightforward item because this particular year in, actually for the last several years, we have had a combined tax rate of .7642. And the recommendation, as we discussed in our budget workshop in August, is to keep that unchanged, continuing a complete tax rate of .7642. This particular year, that's broken down under the general fund, or what you might hear me refer to as the maintenance and operation fund, at .6142, with the interest and sinking fund, that's the debt fund, at .15. And so, your action today would set those tax rates in place. And again, that means your tax rate is unchanged for the coming year.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. So, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'll conduct the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak on the tax rate for the taxable property within the city of Terrell? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to item 8.2. Greg, would you read that? Do you have your glasses?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, got my glasses.
All right, good, all right.
I'm getting my little computer here to cooperate with you. Item 8.2. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we bring to you tonight-
Ordinance number 2925, an ordinance of the city of Terrell, Texas establishing the tax rate on all taxable property within the city of Terrell, Texas for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and levying and ordering collection for the year 2022, and providing a lien on all real and personal property to secure the payment of taxes assessed, containing a severability clause, repealing all ordinances and parts thereof in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
Does anybody, Mr. Sims, do you have anything to add on this one?
No, sir.
All right. Does anybody have any questions on ordinance number 2925?
Yes, we do. I was just fixing the table, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Is there any questions, comments? All right, so we will poll or roll call. Grady Simpson, oh, no, I need a motion, right?
Yeah, motion and second first.
Yeah, I need a motion and second first.
Motion to approve resolution number 2925 as presented.
We have a motion from Mayor Ronnie Velazquez and Mayor Protem, District 3. Is there a second? I have a second from Grady Simpson, District 2. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Don, would you please poll the council?
Yes. District 2, Grady Simpson.
Aye.
District 3, Mayor Ronnie Velazquez.
Aye.
District 4, Stephanie Holmes-Thomas.
Aye.
And Mayor Rick Carmona.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes with unanimous consent of those present. Our next item on the agenda, conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding adoption of the budget for the fiscal year beginning October the 1st of 2022 and ending September the 30th of 2023. Mr. Sims.
So, Mayor and Council, we put an abundance of information into your packet related to this, but I'm going to boil it down to some of the most straightforward things. We had a lot of conversations about where we would end up with affordability on salaries. So, for your lowest paid employees, the city of Terrell right now, so you might think about maintenance workers, the folks who are out, the folks I call the 110-degree swing folks, they're out there when it's 100 degrees, they're out there when it's negative 10 degrees, they're out there in all sorts of crazy temperatures working for us. Some of those folks will get between a 9 and 12% raise when it's all calculated out. This also includes the brand-new fire department pay schedule that's included- This also includes the brand-new fire department pay schedule that's included in there. I won't go through that in great detail, but the idea now, and Dawn's been kind enough to put this slide up, right now, we're on the low end of cities that we surveyed last year. And we know all these cities will be making improvements to their salary levels, so we want to be a bit more competitive when we compare ourselves against these folks. So, you can see that Terrell Two there is where we would end up in future budget years with this adoption. So, we did include funding for that. We've had a lot of conversation over the past two or three years about affordability or not of an assistant city manager position. This budget funds that position in January first. This budget keeps static what we're doing with the streets program. We're not making any cuts there, it keeps our park maintenance static the way it is right now. It does include quite a bit of revenue increases in some of our fee structure, and so, I've included those ordinances. Those ordinances are actually for voting next time around, so I won't go through all of that for you right now. But the basic message here is that all of the things council was focused on, are we keeping pace with our needs in our labor? Are we keeping pace with what we're doing in streets? Those questions are answered, those are included in this budget. The other thing I would say is that we did get a couple of last-minute pieces of feedback. One of those is in the library, so I'll thank Councilwoman Thomas for noting this for us. We went through that and noted that there were maybe a couple of little small cuts that had been done in the library. We want to restore that funding, and I think we can restore that funding in the library by taking some slices out of what we're doing in a couple of consultant line items. And so, we'll be working through that process. As y'all know, this is a budget that we approve on two readings. So, normally, what we do when we see small-scale line items like that to be changed is we'll bring it back to you on second reading with those updates and corrections. But this does include, my recommendation for you is that we can take care of that small change that Councilwoman Thomas requested. So, we'll be making those updates, but other than that, we're very confident with the budget that you see before you. The ordinance includes all of our standard language unchanged from the past ten or fifteen years about the operational side, about how we're handling the budget. Your budget highlights will be that our general fund budget will be at forty million dollars, utility fund at eighteen million, and then some of the other line items, I won't go through in great detail there, but your stormwater fund will, for the first time, have one point seven million dollars in revenue, and that really helps us on the stormwater side. So, I appreciate all the support on that. You can see our tax income and refinance zone is growing, over two point two million dollars in revenue this coming year. And then, we've listed for the first time all of our public improvement districts in your consolidated listing there. So, you can see those PIDs number one, two, three, four, and five. And those are all payments that developers requested that they make as voluntary payments that help us do maintenance work in those public improvement districts. So, good progress on the budget. Of course, thanks go to Jay Ayers and his team for landing this where it is, and I'm happy to recommend it for your approval.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'll conduct the public hearing to receive comments regarding the adoption of budget for fiscal year beginning October one of 2022 and ending September thirtieth of 2023. Is there anyone to speak behalf of the budget? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and item eight point four, Greg?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we bring to you tonight ordinance number two nine two four, an ordinance of the city of Terrell, Texas approving and adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, 2022, and ending September thirtieth, 2023, providing that expenditures for said fiscal year shall be made in accordance with said budget, appropriating and setting aside the necessary funds out of the general fund and other fund revenues for said fiscal year for the maintenance and operation of the various departments and for various activities and improvements of the city, providing a repealing clause, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. This comes to you tonight on first reading.
Thank you, Greg. Again, this item is discuss and consider. It will also need a roll call, so we'll poll the council if we have, no?
It's optional, but I think it'd be good to go ahead and do it.
Yeah, so, is there any further discussion on ordinance number twenty nine twenty four?
I just have a question with this ordinance. Does it include the raises that our chief brought to us for fire department?
Yes, they do.
All right, I just, my only concern is, I want to take care of the compression, but my idea is, I don't know if we need to take care of it in one budget cycle. I want it to be something we could work into our budget over a couple of years. But if abstain, that'll be the reason why, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Mayor, I do have a couple of different comments. You know, this year, the twenty two, the twenty two, twenty three budget has an increase of funding that are being utilized. For example, those salary increases for staff in what we'll call grades, the lower grades. For example, some of the maintenance workers that Mike shared about earlier, for fire, it does provide the, addressing the compression restructuring for them to meet the current and upcoming needs of public safety in our community. For the library, it means an extended four hours on Fridays for our community members to use the library. For technology, in the city of Terrell, it does make sure that we maintain our move, maintain what we've started to do in the city of Terrell for technology, meaning that we are now bringing the technology in the city of Terrell to the twenty-first century. It's going to take us time before all the city of Terrell is there, but this budget maintains us on that path for the finance slash housing department. It provides staffing to make sure that whether it's a city department or a project or council's requesting information about finances and projection, that the support staff in finance and such housing are available. For public works, it provides increases in streets. It provides increases for stormwater. You know, I think about the open stormwater projects that this budget is going to allow for increases in those projects. It assures that we can still hire a city engineer, as we'll have to let Steve Rogers go and retire, unfortunately. You know, human resources is part of that technology phase that is undergoing, and the municipal development is too. We're maintaining the fire and emergency services. Public safety, again, with police and fire maintaining those services. You know, our utilities going down the line here, as you can tell, with all our departments. Utilities is in the same spot as our engineering department in making sure that we fill that city engineer's spot and prepare for the retirement of our utilities director here soon. For our city manager's officer, this means that it's going to be able to add an assistant city managers to support Mike in all the work that he does. I don't know if he ever gets a chance to sleep and appreciate his work and make sure that, once we get to halfway in the year, that we can start recruiting for assistant of city manager. And there's so much more, you know, when we're looking at this specific budget, that I could go on and on about, from parks to upgrades within city facilities, and not necessarily updates, I'll take that back, but maintenance that needs to be done. So, this budget is a budget that I can say I'm very proud to support because I believe it really took in feedback for District Three, various, you know, all the other districts. Maybe we did not all come to an agreement on every single item that's included in this budget, but there were some compromises that were made. And once again, I will be glad to support this budget.
Thank you, Councilwoman, anyone else?
Yes, just real quickly, I just want the elected mayor and the council to understand that we talked about a quality of life, something that Mr. Sims had brought up a year ago. And I believe to have a quality of life, that you have to have a first responders who can protect it. And you have to have labors, you know, who can service it. So, when it comes to salaries and what we need, I mean, we're going to have to keep that in mind moving forward because the future is coming for Terrell. And if Terrell is growing, and we don't have a labor force, and we don't have first responders, we don't have enough of them, and they're not well-paid, not just to have enough, be fully staffed, but I'm talking about a well-paid, fully staffed, where you can attract talent, people who want to come here, people who want to be in Terrell, Texas, who want to work here, who want to live here. We have to be mindful of that, because you can't grow a city and have a quality of life if you're not going to be able to protect it, be able to make the people feel secured out of here, and be able to service it. So, when we think about quality of life, when we think about having a life where people want to come, live, and play, we have to think about making sure that our staff is fully staffed and well-paid. That has to be a priority.
All right, thank you, Councilman.
Mayor, I will add one more thing, because I'd be remiss if I didn't say something that, items that are included in this budget, or really, actually, ordinances that are coming forward. But if this budget does take into account potential ordinances that we will be voting on soon, where it relieves some financial burden for sixty-five and older community members in terms of their water slash sewer slash trash bill. So, I want to make sure that they, those that are hearing, and they know that we have been pushing for some relief for them as well.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. I just want to add, everything's well said on everyone's part. But I want to thank the council and the staff and everybody who was involved in getting this budget prepared for us and getting to this point. It's never an easy decision as to funding and not funding. The questions always come up, but we do need to take care of our employees, we all agree on that. And even going into next year, I would say, hey, we need to put the employees first. Those that we didn't quite do what we wanted to, we should address it again next year, see where we are, and move forward with them. But thank everybody for their efforts, and at this time, we will consider ordinance number two nine two eight, city budget. Is there a motion?
Is it two nine two eight or two nine two four?
Twenty nine twenty four, right? What did I say, two nine two eight? Yeah, twenty nine twenty four, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve ordinance number two nine two four as presented.
We have a motion from Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, Mayor Pro Tem District Three. Is there a second? I have a second from Grady Simpson, District Two. Dawn, would you poll the council, please?
Grady Simpson, District Two.
Aye.
Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, District Three.
Aye.
Stephanie Holmes-Thomas.